I'm over thousands and remember all the people that died strictly for our team because in the sense of four lethal words. I say that it's going to be confirmed in 15 years, but not back. Also, the nation block, brother law just kind of finally died fast.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If possible.
City Council meeting September 25th, 2017.
Consulor Zee.
President.
Consulor Cameron.
Here.
Consulor Connel.
President.
Consulor Cronin.
President.
Consulor Devlin.
President.
Consulor Earl.
President.
Consulor Augman.
Here.
Consulor Juntun.
President.
Consulor Tontar.
President.
Consulor Vogel.
President.
Consul President O'Brien.
Here.
Late file items?
Please to report, other than the mayor's update, there are no late file items.
Hello.
Public comment. Lisa Mead?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council, Lisa Mead, M. Tellerman Costa, 30 Green Street, on behalf of Ganton LLC, the owners of the property at 374 Merrimack Street. This evening, you will hopefully be hearing from the Planning Development Committee, a proposal to change the I-2 zoning district to allow by right a corporate headquarters and professional office space. The subcommittee, along with the planning board, recommended this unanimously. Our clients are trying to make reuse of this structure. You might know that the structure is, you know, a large industrial building, mostly manufacturing, largely unused right now. It's a pre-existing non-conforming building. Any changes to the exterior of the building would require them to go and get a special permit for non-conformities. If they were to use the lot across the street, it would require site plan review, or other uses might require a special permit. This is merely for the uses in the existing structure by right, and we would request your support. The applicant has informed me that he has a large tenant in New Report that needs space that doesn't exist in the city of New Report, and that, I filed this in May, they've been holding them on since May, and that short of this space, there is no other space to keep this client in New Report. So, our goal is to reuse the spaces, corporate headquarters allow the existing business to stay in the city, and we would hope that the city council supports that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew? Matthew, I wouldn't try to pronounce the last name to.
I've been married for 32 years, my wife still has challenges with that.
Well, it makes you feel better, but thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm here.
We want to hear the last name.
Oh, Penizak.
Thank you.
But if I say Pinyonzak, people say Kuzumtay, so. So I was asked to be present today. I've been being nominated for, to become a member of the trustee of the Waterfront Trust.
Oh.
And just wanted to come and make sure I put a face behind a name, or a knee behind a face, you know, for some of you, and just give you a couple of words about me, and hopefully make you comfortable and confident that I would be worthy next member of that, you know, of that trust. Very quickly, I've been actively involved in the city in a number of ways for 20 some odd years. I have a business here in town that employs over 100 people. Darling Consulting Group, some of you may know that name. My wife and I have actually lived here for 24 years, here on Marlboro Street, and we have a very deep, deep rooted passion for the city and everything it has to offer, you know, including the preservation of the waterfront in an appropriate manner for the citizens and the visitors of this town to enjoy now and in perpetuity. I think some things that I bring to the table that hopefully would be of interest is I have a very strong diversified financial, you know, background. I've been actively involved in the banking industry for as long as I can remember. I, people will say that I'm a very good communicator, and I have the ability to look at data and information and assess situations very quickly and decipher things that are important and that are not. I believe that I'm very good at working with people with different opinions and perspectives, and working to find ways that we can move forward in, you know, a mutually agreeable manner. So, I'll just stop with that. That's pretty good. If you've got anything else that you'd like to ask me, I'd be delighted to do so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve Conley?
My name is Steve Conley, and I'm the founder of We the People, a national whistleblower organization. And I just want to thank every one of the members of the council for taking the time to look into our concerns about the evacuation plan at Seaburke, and also the fact that the NRC hasn't always looked into our concerns. And I encourage you tonight to certainly vote on the letter that Consulor Barry Connell has put together, and we appreciate the work that you, the time you took to look into these concerns. I just want to tell you too, we had, got an update that you're not the only ones that looking at this. I've been speaking with Attorney General Healy's office for the last month and a half, and I'm very encouraged that she has put together a legal team to look into all our concerns. And that's very encouraging. And behalf of our brave informants who come to us from the NRC and from other plants, including Seaburke, we're eventually going to get to the truth of this, and the authority of whether the plant continues to operate should be left in the hands of the people, not a federal agency that has jeopardized your safety. And we're going to be able to prove that. Thanks again for your attention in this important issue.
Thank you. Thank you. Tanya Hartford?
Thank you. My name is Tanya Hartford. I'm at 22 Jackson Street. I'm here because I, my name is being nominated for planning board. By way of background, I am a certified planner. I have nearly 20 years' experience in the field, both at the municipal level, where I worked as a community and economic development planner, and then I also worked at Mass Development on the financing side for brownfields and pre-development, and then in the planning and real estate development side, where I helped start up programs like the Transformative Development Initiative, TA Connect, where we helped to bring together various programs at the state level, and the Commonwealth Places Program that has recently started to help place making programs. I'm most recently working for a developer for the last 10 months, so I've seen development from all different sides of the table, except for being on a board. So, I find that this is a good opportunity for me to use my skills. I know how to read a zoning ordinance. I actually appear before different cities, and so I welcome the opportunity to use my skills here in the town that I live in. So you guys have my contact information, you have my resume. If you guys have any questions, feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email, and I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you very much. Jane Snow?
Good evening, Jane Snow, 9th Avenue Street. You have Merson on the agenda for the planning, and I'm not opposed to office spaces. I think we need to use, make a better use of that building. These people own it, they have to pay taxes. I would love to see it be a much more active building than what it is. My only concern is the parking lot across the street. There has, the developer originally proposed a garage and housing. He pulled it from the table and said he wouldn't go back to it, but my concern is that we have things in place that, if and when that should come up, that it would be going through boards to be approved. You know, did we look at the traffic? Did we look at the impact and those kinds of things? So that's my only concern, and I wish them well, and I hope they have plenty of new tenants and make it a much more active building. But, thank you.
Rob Germanara?
Good evening, City Council President, City Clerk Jones, member of the city council. Rob Germanara, 2 Ashland Street. I'm a 50-year resident of the Lower Ashland Street neighborhood, and I want to state for the record, we're not opposed to corporate headquarters or offices down here. We would like to see that building thrive again. What we're concerned about is that if you had a major zoning change here tonight, it would be a by right use instead of a special permit. At a subcommittee meeting, and Attorney Mead failed to mention this part of it, there was only two members of that subcommittee, Consulor Cameron and Consulor Cornell. Consulor Augman was absent that night, and the planning board chairman, Chairman McCarthy and planning board member Dawn Walters were adamant that it should be by special permit, and it didn't go that way with a vote finally, but that's caused for concern that something of this nature should be done by special permit. Consulor Cornell suggested that the mechanism, the trigger, if you will, to take care of somebody, some of these issues is the mayor's office, and I would suggest to you that the mechanism, the trigger to take care of drainage, lighting, and screening issues is the planning board, the zoning board, and the conservation commission. That's quite a nice space, and I believe that if Ganton LLC has a tenant lined up in another month or two, it's not going to slow them down. So I would specifically ask that this be changed to by special permit only. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment, the mayor's comment?
Good evening, Council President O'Brien, members of the city council. First, I would like to congratulate Move Overhead for a very entertaining event on Friday night, and hopefully that you raise significant money to continue the great work that you do, and congratulations to all the councilors and members of the audience who participated in this event, and stretch themselves a little bit more than you normally do in terms of this good cause. Planning updates first, Evergreen Development. You have copies of the AECOM report on drilling, which provided new information on the aquifer as we talked about, and new information on groundwater levels. Consequently, last week, the Water and Sewer Commission voted unanimously to require peer review of the construction design and groundwater levels, and in support of the firm of Woodward and Curran. However, the planning board was persuaded at their last meeting this past Wednesday night to use the peer review team of Horstley and Witten, who is already, has a current scope of work for peer review by the Conservation Commission, and their scope will be added to look at this work also. We hope to have that additional information for you in about one month. Complete design plans and bid documents arrived at City Hall today from Desmond Associates for the intermodal facility garage. They're available through the planning office, and as soon as we're able to, we'll be sure that those get up online for all to be able to read. The bid package will be released electronically through Project Dog, local memory report firm on October 6th, with bid documents due November 11th. We are continuing in efforts to assist in relocation of the final tenant, our contract relocation specialist. Closure on the sale of property from NED to the city is continued upon this final relocation. That will be followed by the demolition of the existing building, and NED has 60 days to complete that demolition. The MRR, Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, also presented a training to all the subcontractors and contractors that will be potentially bidding by Wendy Lee. They're turning with experience in dealing with FTA requirements. Then, we are also working on the operational MOU with the RTA. Next meeting of the intermodal advisory group was scheduled for Thursday, October 12th, but it looks like that's not going to work for some of the members, and it could be pushed back to 11th. We'll get that change in date to you as soon as possible. Tomorrow, Rich Jones, Jordy Vining, Paul O'Brien and I are going up to Dover, New Hampshire. The city just opened up a couple weeks ago, a 327 space garage after three decades of debate. It is brick, next to a police station, and near residences. Sound familiar? We will be reviewing the construction process as well as going over operations with them. Minko is awaiting sign off on the resolution of the butter dispute regarding the affordable housing development on the MBTA property and our 40R Smart Growth District for 76 rental units. They're also waiting for a sign off from National Grid, but that project, other than those pieces, is ready to move forward. Under DPS, I always like to keep you up to date when our personnel are deployed. Peter King from our water department has been deployed through Task Force One in Beverly to Puerto Rico, and we wish him well and a safe journey. The Graff Road lift station, again, as you will recall, that Mass Works funded $1.8 million towards this project, and the state was out last week to assess the status, and reports were very, very favorable. Tilton Street drainage construction should finish in the next two weeks. Phillips Drive, update to the neighborhood on the start of a hydrology study and other assessments in process will be held on September 27th at 6:00 PM at the Senior Community Center. The Westman-Eisman bids came in below budget, this is good news, and T Ford of Georgetown was a low bidder at $193,000. Then again, Way, the water main replacement should be completed this week. The wastewater treatment facility currently, they are running only on one secondary clarifier, and they're working on repairs to the other one that is offline. The first primary clarifier cover, as you recall, I told you it was coming in from Houston, has arrived and is being assembled. The fine bubble aeration has been installed, and this is important, if you look at the pictures I included in the update. One on the left is the construction of the new biofilter that's underway, and on the right is the fination bubble aeration. This creates an absolute increase in oxygen, greater amounts of oxygen to break down waste, and is far more efficient. And we're really happy that that system has been installed, and the, as I said, the new biofilter construction is underway. Ogway, as you know, I sent you an email beginning of last week after the water main valve burst inside the building, causing some significant flooding and water damage. Maya has been out to do an assessment. We were very, very fortunate in that the SCADA system, the mission control for the air vac system, other computer systems, as well as our generator, were left untouched. So we're continuing to do cleanups there. We have not confirmed the hydrant flushing, fall flushing dates as of yet, but I will send that out to you as soon as that is confirmed. We will post sign boards again, web information, as well as a press release. Senator Ives and Representative Cal Course organized a meeting with Mass DOT this past Friday about concerns about the problems with the Gillis Bridge. One time in August, it was stuck open for four and a half hours. This creates obviously grave concerns, not only for traffic and, you know, congestion, but also for public safety, trying to get across the bridge to the hospital, et cetera, and having to reroute. So they are replacing, most of the mechanics in the bridge are from the 1960s model, and those are going to be replaced starting November 15th, and I will keep you updated on how those repairs go, and we will have a follow-up meeting to be held in the spring. Regarding the schools, congratulations to Sean Reardon, who was unanimously selected by the joint meeting of the school committee and city council to serve the unexpired term of a member who has relocated from the city. A search committee will be formed shortly to initiate the process to seek a new superintendent. Obviously, that should say by July 1, 2018, sorry. We are sorry to learn of the retirement of Susan Vaccaro. She has served our community and our school system very well for the past five years. Cheryl Sweeney, who is stepping down as vice chair of the school committee because she is not running for reelection, will chair the search committee. Bruce Menon will represent the school committee, and Barry Connell has volunteered to represent the city council with the blessing of the council and the city council president. Press release will be issued this week, and anyone interested in serving on the search committee for our new superintendent should send a letter of interest to my office, Tension City Hall, and the school committee will discuss the process and consultant to be hired at our next school committee meeting. Just a reminder, especially those of you on Joint Ed, we will be meeting at the Senior Community Center during October, November, and December. We're trying to see if that will increase attendance at school committee meetings because of access of parking and ease of getting in and out of the building and accessibility. So just keep that in mind, and we've made arrangements for Joint Ed at that 5:30 time slot. Some IT updates, the city fiber optic network installation, as you recall, we did receive a grant for this, is estimated to begin mid-October. Planning schedule and logistics are almost completed. We'll have more information for you on that. Remote and satellite city facilities are anticipated to be migrated to the fiber network through the winter and early spring. Upgrading of the server-based network phone system has been successfully completed, as well as the police mobile data terminals, which has been a very long process. That first trial did not work and had to go back and do a major upgrade to the mobile data terminals in the cruisers. We had to replace the traffic cameras downtown because they end of life and failures. Those have been replaced. In phase one of 32-bit Windows desktop computers is underway to be replaced with 64-bit desktop Windows computers, and 10 will be deployed shortly. Affordable Housing, our trust, Affordable Housing Trust is hosting a meeting this Thursday, 9:28 at 6:30 PM at the library to update the community on our Affordable Housing Trust. If you recall, four years ago, we brought in a consultant who updated our affordable housing in the city, and they are going to do an update and have conversations with the community about that. I'm not going to read the whole next section to you, but some of you might have noticed or in your readings that Revere is doing a ballot question in November, and the ballot question is based on addressing a senior 10% decrease in property taxes based on age, income, and home ownership. And we all have heard as our property values are going through the roof and taxes are raising, that seniors are having difficulty in our community, and so our finance team has begun to take a very serious look at this under, we currently have 41, get this right, 41C, which gives a break to some of our seniors, but that only qualifies 49 residents annually. Obviously, we have a lot more seniors than 49 in the community. So we're looking at 41C and a half, and we're looking, and you can read a little bit more about that. I've also given you the link to questions and Q and As that are posted from Revere in terms of what they are doing to address this issue. So we are very serious about taking a look at this issue as we go forward, see if there's a way that we might be able to give some further relief outside of the tax incentive program and the 41C and the circuit breaker to our seniors at this point. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of events that have occurred since our last meeting. The North Shore Chamber annually hosts the mayors and managers to give an update on the economics development and special events in their city. That was held on September 13th, very well-attended event. And the governor and the new labor and workforce secretary from Amesbury, Rosalina Costa, with higher ed and business community members, were there at Whittier to celebrate. They're receiving a highly competitive grant of $500,000 in advanced manufacturing. It was a wonderful event. And then, last Friday, we were able to give a check for $1,000 to Run for Home Plate, a branch of the Red Sox Foundation that provides a special clinic at MGH for veterans and their families at no charge, and these funds have been collected from staff every Friday who wear jeans to work, and we keep raising a significant chunk of change and be able to donate that to nonprofits probably every six months or so.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Is the search committee for the superintendent a fixed size? Is it 10 people, 12? So just to be clear, parents could serve if they want?
I would hope to have a parent on it. It really gets unwieldy if it gets beyond 15. We usually like to have 12 to 15 from past experience, because once you start getting into dozens of people, it becomes very.
I just ask so the people listening, if there's parents out there that want to serve.
Absolutely, we want cross-sectional people from the schools, community, elected officials, interested people, business community. You really want a nice cross-sectional people.
Thank you. Second question, on the fiber network, do we have any idea what the physical changes are? Are there anything that would happen outside, new holes, new wires being hung?
Let Mark come and present some more information to the city council about this. I asked him just for a quick bulletin.
It's an exciting.
Yes, it is. It's very exciting.
I know that. For some reason, I thought we didn't get the grant, but I guess we got it on the second try, maybe something like that.
You're right, second try.
Yeah, I would be appreciative if Mark could just tell us.
A little more detail on that, certainly.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for the September 11th and the September 18th.
There's one transfer, Transfer 43, general budget contingency, $55,000 to police salary for the officers. Their contract is also attached. That's to go to budget and finance. There's one appointment, Appointment Number 61, Tanya Hartford, 22 Jackson Street, to the planning board until January 31st, 2019. And that's the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Mayor's update.
Motion received. Five seconds.
Aye.
Thank you. Communication?
Communication 110 is a letter from Gail Hytman. This you saw before. Unfortunately, due to some conflict, she couldn't make it. It is a letter requesting, table again, bake sale for the benefit of her daughter, and it is in the regular agenda because it is on October 9th, the day before the next meeting.
Motion's in the rules.
I would motion to do an emergency preamble.
Second. Do we need one? It's already been before us.
Okay.
That's why, you know, it's just a different date. I think we know what it's about. We know what it's about, so I don't know if we need a ready preamble. If we do, that's a ruling of the city clerk.
I would say you're right, Mr. President. The matter's been before here, once before.
And we approve.
The only thing that's different is the date.
Motion to suspend the rules, to be safe. Take one reading.
To pass. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Appointments?
Appointments are as follows. Appointment Number 54, India Call, 76, Prospect Street, with a cultural council till 10/1/2020. Appointment 55.
Johnson Williamson, 39 Temple Street, Cultural Confluence, 61, 2020. Appointment 56, Matthew D. Paziniak, 36 Marlboro Street, Waterfront Trust, until December 31st, 2019, with apology. Reappointment, Appointment Number 57, Janice Kelty, 24 Dorothy Lucy Drive, council on aging until 5/31/2022. Appointment Number 58, Joanne Kincaid, 17 Otis Place, Number 2, council on aging until 5/31/2022. Appointment Number 59, Raymond Rowe, 7 Christopher Street, council on aging until 5/31/2022. Appointment Number 60, Judy Avery, 54 Milk Street, cultural council until 6/1/2020.
Motion to approve collectively?
Second.
We'll call on those appointments.
Collectively, Consulor Zee.
Yes.
Consulor Cameron.
Yes.
Consulor Connel.
Yes.
Consulor Cronin.
Yes.
Consulor Devlin.
Yes.
Consulor Earl.
Yes.
Consulor Augman.
Yes.
Consulor Juntun.
Yes.
Consulor Tontar.
Yes.
Consulor Vogel.
Yes.
Consul President O'Brien.
Yes.
You want to ordinances?
The ordinances, there is one ordinance, it is ordinance Number 14, which is submitted by Consulor Augman, and it relates to smoking in certain municipal facilities, specifically the In Street Playground, within 10 feet of any portion thereof.
Motion to refer to Neighborhood and City Services?
Second.
Mr. President? Just a quick explanation, this issue was brought to my attention by constituent Katie Ives. We don't have any control over this right now, and people are smoking in the playground. I submitted this to the Health Commission as well, and I think they met on it last week, but I haven't got an update yet, so we'll get their input as well. Thank you.
Consul Cronin?
I actually, unbeknownst to Consul for Ward 2, also got a call, so I would respectfully ask that when this does go before committee, that we look at all playgrounds in the community. ask that when this does go before committee, that we look at all playgrounds in the community. And this is also going before the Parks Commission for their perusal. And I do believe, and it escapes me right now, there is a community locally that does ban smoking around all tot lots or all playgrounds. So, I'd ask that we look at this collectively.
Councillor Zee?
I just was going to ask if we think we're going to have a lot to discuss. Might we have committee of the whole, just to be safe for posting if more councillors want to come, just to be in the clear? Sure. What? Was that an amendment? It is. I'll accept it. The secondor will.
On table?
Aye.
Nothing from Budget and Finance, Mr. President. Nothing from General Government.
Our next meeting is going to be October 2nd at 5:30, and it looks like we'll be meeting at the Senior Community Center.
Thank you. Nothing from license and permits.
Neighborhood and City Services?
Nothing at this time.
Planning Development?
Yeah. Mr. President, motion to remove Ordinance 007. Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Councillor?
Motion to amend, Mr. President. Make a motion to amend to change the draft from P for permitted to special permit by the Planning Board. I will second that.
Councillor Agarman?
Well, you heard testimony from the attorney for the proponent and also some nearby residents, so you know the basic facts. Just so I can explain my position, again, I was not able to attend. I couldn't make the input at the meeting. The precedent that we have is two years ago, I put in an ordinance to allow office use at the Office Park, which wasn't allowed, which is the I-1 and the I-1A. But when we did that two years ago, it was by special permit by the Planning Board. So, first, I'd like to be consistent. You know, if there's a reason to depart here, I don't see it. The Toll Property, which is the other property that's I-2, also does not allow office and still doesn't, even though there's office there, it's under the overlay district that they can do office. Next, this particular site is a pretty sensitive and important site. It's been an important job site for the city for decades, and in fact, the parking was enlarged across the street, really as a special dispensation to the former employer. So, there's essentially greater public interest in this zone than there might be otherwise. In addition, you might think, well, you're only changing from industrial to office. What's the big deal? But the parking needs are going to change. So, the parking requirements for an office user are not necessarily going to be the same as for an industrial user, and it would behoove the city to exercise some care. I'm not inclined to take on faith, the idea that a tenant's going to be lost. That seems unlikely. There's no right to zoning in Massachusetts. It's completely within the discretion of the people and their elected representatives, and there's no guarantee that office use would be allowed here, so really shouldn't do any prejudice to the owner if they have to go through a special permit process. The report is renowned for its fast approval process. And with that, I hope you support the amendment.
Councillor Zee?
I'd just like to ask my colleagues if they can, if we can talk through, normally, I guess this would have been done in committee, but talk through the practical implications of special permit versus permitted. So, for the existing property that's there, to use it for office space under permitted, it simply, does it go through site plan review just as a project as opposed to a special permit? And then, if it's under a special permit, is that two different processes, one for special permit, one for site plan review? Or are those one? I just want to understand the practical difference between these two. And I remember the debate a couple of years ago as a resident about the Office Park, and at the time, I remember favoring by right. So, I'd like to understand what the differences are here. And then, just so I can finish my question, and I'm hoping somebody will answer, we have one side of the street that is a building that exists, and the other side is an empty, and I know there's other questions about the empty space, but for right now, I can find my question to this, and would ask for a knowledgeable colleague to explain to me how the process will go in both cases.
Well, Mr. President, we don't have the Planning Director here, but that's okay. I mean, as I understand it, the site plan review is triggered by a size. So, if the existing building is not changed in size, and it goes from industrial use to office use, it would not necessarily trigger site plan review. Also, my colleague raises a good point, which is that we seem to be focused on the existing building, and the applicant's attorney spoke of a new tenant that would move into that building. But the amendment, if you do it by right, would cover all of the property, including the very large parking spaces across the street. And so, therefore, you could build an office building there newly, and as long as it complies with the dimensional requirements, it would be over the counter, or in this case, through the basement. You just go down to the building inspector, and he hands you a permit. And again, I don't think that's appropriate for this site.
Councillor?
I might add to what Councillor Agarman said. I believe in all instances, the parking requirements of both facilities have to be met on their site, so that's also a part of the process. I would like to, before my responding to Councillor Agarman's amendment, correct something that was said earlier about the way in which I addressed a butter concerns about lighting, about drainage, about noise on the site. It was not in the context of this proposal that I made such comments. I made those comments as a recommendation to the butters, as a way that they could informally at any time, apart from these considerations, address issues that affected their quality of life because they live near that facility. So, I want to make that clear, and I think that was just an inadvertent error from Mr. Germaner in characterizing my position at that point. Now, to the point that Councillor Agarman has raised, the amendment, I think it only fair, since we did not, we voted unanimously, the Planning Board and then the councillors present, to report the bill out as you had it in your packet, unamended. I think it only fair that if we are going to look at the possibility of a special permit requirement, that it be recommitted to the Committee on Planning Development and reviewed with the Planning Board, because that is a substantive change that I think merits their consideration and their contribution to our deliberations. So, I, my recommendation, and I would, I don't know what the appropriate parliamentary move is here, the clerk can advise me, is that we recommit this to the committee and to the Planning Board for further review.
Leader of table.
Councillor Devlin? The committee meeting and the Planning Board, did the, this is coming out, no, this is not coming out of you. This is coming out of you, excuse me. I'm confused at you presenting so many things, Charlie. The Planning Board, did the Planning Director speak at that? Did he opine on what could be built in the parking lot under this, under this change, if we were to allow it without special permit, without needing special permit?
Yeah, I don't specifically recall, but, and I would defer to, Councillor Agarman wasn't at that meeting, but I don't recall that being discussed. You know, what Mr. Germaner said in his public comment, I believe the Planning Board did approve this permitted, not by special permit. There was a whole other discussion about multifamily and other uses, and whether this ordinance proposal was a vehicle to look at that. I mean, my understanding is that if a new building was proposed there, and again, I heard what Councillor Agarman said, but I believe there would be Planning Board involvement if there was another building there. So, again, Director Port is sick today and was not able to be here. I'm sure we could have had somebody from the Planning Board, but I, you know, the minutes reflect, I mean, I remember somebody specifically saying, and it might have been Jim McCarthy from the Planning Board, that, you know, if this tenant wants to go in there and nothing changes on the exterior, and it's simply instead of people coming in and doing light manufacturing or whatever's going on in there now, if it was just going to be an office space or professional use, for them to go to the Planning Board, whatever number of steps that takes and whatever time, that didn't seem like it was useful oversight. So, that's why we did it the simple way.
Councillor Devlin? Because, you know, typically, this is happening within the four walls of an existing structure, and I have a problem with delaying, you know, that building is empty, and that's not good for Newburyport, and I have a problem with delaying something that is not changing, you know, really outwardly, it's not going to make any difference to us. In fact, you know, just empirically, that's a far more or less intensive use than manufacturing would be for an office space. I think it would be something, we don't have a lot of space. That's the whole point of doing this. We don't have a lot of space in Newburyport for commercial activity to take place. You know, I hear the complaints of the community. I just, I'm having some trouble, but of course, if the lot could be used for something else and could be built on, it just doesn't seem like we should, I hear Mr. Germaner's comments, but they were, we need this special permit because we need to have them address issues now. Special permits really for having somebody each time that they go use it to address neighborhood concerns. So, it's not just, it would seem like there was a better way of addressing and guaranteeing performance by the property owner than require, you know, acquiring this as a zoning change. I don't know if that actually can be accomplished, going back to the Planning Board now and getting council and client, and property owner together and maybe memorialize some agreements. Maybe that would address some of the neighborhood's concerns as well.
Councillor Tonta?
Yeah, the major concern of butters in this area is to prevent residential development on the south side, right? And also to prevent the construction of a parking facility on the south side. That was discussed before the Planning Board in the joint meeting, and it, you know, I talked to the Planning Director. I think subsequently, we could come in and change that, either by separating the lot so that on the south side, you had different zoning than on the north side. That would take some time to do. The other concern is the drainage and lighting problem in the parking lot. And I tell you, you know, Ganton LLC would like to get going on this project. They are concerned about losing a new lodge tenant. I think time is of the essence here. I'd be concerned about sending it back to committee. I would urge you to vote no on the amendment and allow this to go forward. I think we can talk to Ganton. I think we can get light improvements there and improvements in drainage, and build a strong relationship with Ganton LLC, which will be to the benefit of the butters and the city at large.
Councillor? Maybe if I may direct a question to Ward 2 councillor. If we, if your amendment failed, and this was passed tonight, wouldn't we then be in a situation that anybody could put a placeholder in there for development on the entire parcel?
Well, I mean, if you change the zoning, again, the zoning is going to cover all I-2 districts. We have two different areas where we have I-2 districts, and this particular one we're talking about, the so-called Merson Property, is both the existing structures on the riverside and all of the vacant area on the other side, which as I say, the city gave special dispensation to make into surface parking, tapering over wetlands issues and so on. So, yes, you would be giving carte blanche for an office project. So, if they conform to whatever the dimensional requirements is, requirements are for an office project, and they can meet the parking requirements, why, you know, there'd be site plan review, but it's automatic. You cannot deny that use. It's done. It's over.
I just have a quick follow-up. Can we at this juncture split this into two sections? Can we reduce the scope of this zoning amendment? You just say the north side of Barback Street, leaving the south side where it is for further study. Nice to do.
I mean, you could, but I mean, you'd be creating a new zone that we don't have. I mean, they're both I-2, and the amendment is for I-2. So, I, I mean, unfortunately, we haven't got the city solicitor here to advise us, but I don't know if that's going to get you what you want. I mean, again, the point of a special permit is that it allows for some process where the Planning Board does not have to approve it until they're satisfied that impacts are mitigated. It doesn't mean they're not going to get it. And also, I would say, you know, considering that the Planning Board recommended to approve office use by right, I suspect they're predisposed to grant the special permit. So, I mean, really, this is just to be diligent and try to understand, it's in the context of at least my four years on this council of how things have gone. You know, I'm not comfortable just letting things go on a lick and a promise. I'd like to have some process and some protection, because once you give that up, it's gone.
Councillor Vogel?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may direct a question also back to the councillor from Ward 2. My concern is the delay in getting this moving forward. I see that as an empty building. Help me understand, I hear you say categorically that if we change this to as just permitted, that essentially, an application could be made and a building installed on the parking lot. Is that, that plain and simple, please?
Two things. Again, if you're talking about a building on the --
Parking lot side.
If it is code compliant, there's no ability for the Planning Board to say no. They can have site plan review, but they cannot say no. They have to be reasonable in the conditions they put on it. They can't just say, you know what, on balance, we don't want office. It's too many more parkers into the neighborhood. Also, you know, it would help me to evaluate a claim of an emergency. We don't know who this tenant is. We've never seen a copy of the lease provision. What is all this?
Right. I'm not trying to debate that issue at all. I don't, that's how it is. I'm just trying to understand that essentially, there would be site plan review, but there would be a butter concerns, there would be, would be the whole process of putting up a building, right? I mean, they just couldn't just, and again, setbacks, lighting, drainage, all that stuff would come into play should they desire to put up a building on the parking lot. Is that, I mean, it goes full force to the Planning Board. It's just not a ticket to ride, per se. Is that, I'm trying to break it down just a little bit to see where currently the protections are, or where the guidelines are.
Okay. Again, a special permit means that the special permit granting authority has the ability to say no.
Got that.
That they determine that on balance, it is not in the public interest to allow the proposed use. Site plan review is merely the details presuming that the use is permitted. So, it isn't very strong. So, in fact, on the DOD, the Downtown Overlay District, we made a conscious effort to make that a special permit for changes downtown. Not that that's been observed too well, but to make changes downtown, major changes to building, because we didn't, we wanted it to have teeth. You take away the special permit, it doesn't have teeth. Now, if the council doesn't care, that's fine, but just realize, that's it. You are saying henceforth, all office use is okay on this site. And the details, for example, of, you know, do you have multiple buildings on that lot? You know, all that other stuff, you know, you're losing some leverage on that. That's all I'm saying. other stuff, you know, you're losing some leverage on that, that's all I'm saying.
You know, I, I did question the planning director closely on this, you know, I'm, I'm not a land use attorney, but, but he indicated that if it was permitted by right, and there was any effort to, to, to change either the building on the north side or to construct the building on the south side, that the city would have sufficient means to control what happened there, and I'm, I'm just indicating to you what he said. So, I, I mean, he, he was saying normally, what we're doing in zoning is we're determining whether or not that use is appropriate for that area, in this case, corporate headquarters and social services, and, and that exactly what happens on the site through a site plan would be addressed by city agencies.
Counsel Z?
So, I'm, I'm really hung up with this one, but, you know, I'm just looking at our zoning code here and in the use table, so the following things are permitted in I-2: manufacturing, light manufacturing, craft manufacturing, accessory retail industry, printing and publishing, research and development, industrial services, and the list goes on. So the risk that we're talking about here, it, it actually is already inherent in our code, and this is, the problem is, you know, without going off into the distance here, these are the things we, we need to address, the dimensional controls, the overall use table, so I, I think, my, my personal opinion is it would make sense for us as a body to, to leave tonight by allowing the office use there, that's my personal opinion, because I don't have a problem with it, and I just want to find a way to get there, and clearly the I-2 probably needs to be addressed overall, because I can't imagine that if, if you're saying you want to do office space by special permit, that you wouldn't want manufacturing to be held at the same standard, if somebody wanted to build a factory on the, on the parking lot, I'm, I'm sure that would be quite problematic, so consistency is tough, because we have consistency against the office park, and we also have consistency within, within the I-2, and as is often the case, they don't, they don't converge.
What's the double?
Yeah, the reasonable conditions that the planning board can impose is drainage, lighting, you know, cleanliness, but the big one, too, it's why one of those uses hasn't gone there now is the parking, we expanded that parking to address the, or allowed that parking, the building across the street is using that parking in part of its parking count, so if you built another building there that took up those parking spaces, you're going to lose parking spaces, not only for that building's calculations, but the building across the street's calculations, so, you know, I, I just, I can't see a reason not to support this, because I think we can address the neighborhood's concerns if they do decide to build a building there.
Thanks, Mr. President. I was just following the same train of thought as Counsel Z, except he has a fancier computer than my little smartphone, and, yeah, I mean, similarly, I mean, if they wanted to do manufacturing, that's permitted there, so I think, you know, and I know Counsel Agarman described sort of the changes made in the business park, where maybe it's that the medical uses are special permit or however that, that played out, you know, I'm going to vote against the amendment, I totally understand the impulse, I, I'm not, you know, that, there's certainly an argument to be made there, whether the amendment fails or not, I'm going to vote for, for the ordinance change in general, and I think we should just do it tonight and not delay it.
Counsel Junta?
When, when, when Kane brought this project to the residents a few months back, I, I attended that meeting, and, and the residents were, they were okay with businesses going into the existing building, but they had big reservations on what happens to that parking lot, and there was some residential talked about, there was a parking garage talked about, they really didn't like it, and, and what I, what I really don't like about this is, is we're, we're opening it up because we haven't, I guess, done it correctly, we haven't split the lot, we haven't done the work that needs to be done to make this right, I have no problem with this turn into a little, you know, office-type park within one building, the problem is, is we're going to turn the other lot into something that presumably could be built on, and that's exactly what the residents told us not to do. So if a special permit is what's necessary to slow that process down, to, to get the tenant in the building, but also keep anybody from building on the parking lot until zoning can be fixed, maybe it is the way to go. I'm, I'm freewheeling, just like you guys through this whole thing, trying to understand it all, and the one thing I do understand is the residents don't want anything built on that parking lot, and we need to put as many hurdles in place as possible to make sure that doesn't happen. I would have liked to have seen north and south split, so we wouldn't even be having this conversation, but we're not there, so, my thoughts.
Wait, the amendment, please? This is a motion to amend to a special permit from permitted, it's a special permit by the planning board. Counsel Z?
No.
Counsel Cameron?
No.
Counsel Connell?
No.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
No.
Counsel Earl's?
No.
Counsel Agarman?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
No.
Counsel Vogel?
No.
Counsel President O'Brien?
Yes.
Four yes votes, needing a majority, motion fails. The motion to approve is on the floor. Vogel? Your motion to approve as written. Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
No.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Earl's?
Yes.
Counsel Agarman?
No.
Counsel Junta?
No.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, needing eight, two-thirds on zoning, the matter fails.
Nothing to report?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove Order 51.
Second. Section 13, 179, handicap zones for Ting Street, one space at 29 Ting Street until June 30th, 2019, submitted, Counsel Tontar.
Yeah, this was a request from a constituent who is undergoing a number of surgeries and has, has a number, has a handicapped vehicle, and there's construction on Ting Street, so she's having a great deal of difficulty getting her vehicle parked in proximity to her home, so I think it's necessary to do, I would appreciate your vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove Order 52.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, motion approved. Second. Read it, please. Reads as follows, Washington Street on handicap space at 53 Washington Street through June 30th, 2019, submitted, Counsel Cronin.
Very similar to what Counsel Tontar said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President, order to move, motion to remove Order 53.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion approved. Second. Read it, please. Reads that the City Council of the City of Newburyport amends a established list of parking restrictions per the City Council to include no parking at Malcolm Hoyt Drive both sides from Hale Street for a distance of 700 feet south of Hale Street, and then the city clerk shall maintain this list and make it available to the public, submitted, Counselors, Counselors Cronin and Junta.
Thank you, very, very quickly, this is not affecting car vehicle parking, this is an area of Malcolm Hoyt that apparently tractor trailers park in and idle all night, waking people up on Hale Street, some of them have refrigeration units, and there's nothing to prevent them there, they can just easily now move around the corner and park and idle in the middle of industrial park, and they'll be fine, this is just a quality of life for some residents on Hale.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else?
Yes, final, Mr. President, Communication 102, letter to the U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead. Motion approved. Second. Counsel?
Thank you, President. I drafted this letter with the assistance of the clerk at the behest of Mr. Connell, who spoke during the public comment period. Let me point out that the points made in this letter to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, I believe it's the Atomic Safety and Licensing Board in particular, the administrative law branch, merely reiterates the position that we have expressed previously about the fragile nature of the emergency response planning that has gone on in, in past years, and as the NRC is now contemplating a relicensing of the Seabrook reactor, it seems entirely appropriate that they consult with the local communities, particularly our public safety people, since they are the first responders, they are the people that are going to be directing an emergency response, and get some local information, boots on the ground, if you will, information about what the communities are like, what the constraints are, how the communities have changed in the 20-odd years since this, this facility was first licensed, that's the, the, the heart of this, and I think it's entirely appropriate for us as the individuals who fund the training and the, the employment of all of these public safety officials, as well as represent the best interests of the people in all six wards of this city, to express some concern about their lack of consultation with our community, and so I, I urge your vote in favor of sending this letter, I would propose that it be signed by the council president if he chooses to do so as the president of this council, but that's at, at his choice.
I just wanted to rise in support and thank the counselor for writing the letter, I, I wrote a similar one last January and received a very bureaucratic response, so hopefully we, we have a chance to, to talk about this, I know a lot of my constituents on Plum Island where evacuation would be exceptionally difficult, not to say that it wouldn't be more difficult everywhere around, have been concerned about this, so I, I rise in support, and I hope that it does lead this to somewhere where we can talk about this, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
No.
One no? Anything else?
Nothing, nothing else.
Public utilities?
Nothing tonight.
May I request a, a three-minute recess to confer with the clerk at your approval?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to see if I can have reconsidered my, my vote in regards to the-
I-2 change.
The I-2 change, and I'd like to see if we could attempt the amendment again to have a special permit.
Motion reconsidered.
A motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, it's a motion to reconsider the zoning ordinance that we just voted on. True, seconded by Counsel Z. The matter is now on the floor again, Mr. President. I'm sorry.
So this is the amendment?
I think, to consider, I think it's a majority vote.
If you give me one second.
The question is, the matter failed, so my determination would be the prevailing side with a nays.
Correct. The prevailing side on, the prevailing side on the ordinance or the prevailing side on the amendment?
The amendment is-
Did you ask for the, the amendment to be reconsidered, you asked for the, for the vote on the amended ordinance to be reconsidered?
No, 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 if, if I may.
Just on the, just on the matter on the floor.
If it's a motion to reconsider the vote that failed, you need a two-thirds supermajority, unless it's with notice, if you do notice, then it's majority, so we need a two-thirds-
Rule 14?
Thirty-five, Roberts Rules of Order, thirty-five.
What, what are you looking at?
Yeah, we, we have our own rule, Rule 14.
So an affirmative vote would put this back on the floor from scratch, effectively, as though we're coming out of committee.
Yeah, our, our reconsideration, Rule 14, always confused me and bothered me because it anticipates that the meeting is over, and then you give me a notice the next day.
Right. Roberts specifies, if it's the same meeting, it's two-thirds.
I can believe it's two-thirds anyway. So it would need, it would need eight votes to reconsider.
Excuse me, what are we reconsidering exactly?
The motion that failed.
They both failed.
Prove that failed on the zoning ordinance going before the matter tonight, forget about whether it was SP or permit, just whether it passed, it failed, so this would put it back on the floor.
Back, back on the floor for further discussion, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
Reconsideration.
Amendments.
And amended.
Yes. That's another matter, so, motion to reconsider, Mr. President, I'm going to do the roll call, Counsel Z?
Yes.
Counsel Cameron?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Counsel Cronin?
Yes.
Counsel Devlin?
Yes.
Counsel Earl's?
Yes.
Counsel Agarman?
Yes.
Counsel Junta?
Yes.
Counsel Tontar?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel President O'Brien?
No.
No, needing eight, the matter's back on the floor for discussion.
Mr. President, motion to amend the change permit into special permit.
Second. By planning board?
By the planning board as the approving, what is it, ESPJ, as the special permit-
SP by planning board.
ESPJ by planning board, thank you.
I'm sorry, so that was a motion to amend it to SP by planning board, seconded?
I seconded. I'll keep it short, I think we all agree, I don't, I didn't hear any dissent about office space in that current space, if special permit is the way that we can get this done tonight, I think it makes more sense than restarting the statutory timeline on a zoning change, out of, out of fairness to the applicant, and then second, secondarily, you know, it seems like we have more work to do on I-2, it's not my ward, so I won't be the forward player on that, but I know there are concerns about residential and other things, and in, in the effort to get, you know, to keep us moving forward, and we do something else to fix the other problems, this is the way I see forward, thank you.
Since I got this started, I'm, I'm very, very really against this, and I would love to see this building repurposed again, I think it's a great idea, my only worry is the neighbors, so an additional hurdle to make sure things slow down, make sure things, make sure things that we don't want to happen, you know, happen, one more hurdle, that's all I was looking for here, so, special permit, motion to approve.
I support the motion to amend at this point, and I was very concerned if it went down, that we would, we would lose an important business partner in the city, and to the detriment of the neighborhood, quite frankly, so I, I support this now.
Mr. President, I'm going to vote against the amendment, as I said before, if the amendment fails or does not, or is passed, I'm going to vote for the final ordinance change, you know, when, when amendments are offered, you know, it would be good to know if people are, you know, hey, I'm going to vote for this amendment, or I'm not going to vote for this, and if I don't get this my way, then I'm going to vote against the whole thing, and that's a good thing to be clear about when we're having these conversations.
Thank you, Mr. President, I might point out to the members that part of the discussion of this matter has not been brought up previously tonight, and I think it's appropriate at this time to do so, and that was, the planning board was split on whether or not the authority as a special permit granting entity, if that was the way to go, should be the planning board or the city council, so I would like you to think about that, if you believe that this matter would be of such import, whether or not it should come to the city council, and then I'll, now I'll express my own opinion, and that is no. I, I believe that the planning board has the experience, the expertise, and should retain that authority, but that's me, but I did want you to know that that was on the table, we did not resolve that in any way other than what was presented to you tonight, and that was, they did not want, across the board, a special permit process, so I'm in accord with Counsel Cameron, I will vote against this amendment again in anticipation of voting for the zoning change as it was originally proposed, thank you.